Boston zoning board. I'll start over. Good morning, the city of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for August thirteen twenty twenty four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March twenty twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access the hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the notice, public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Better Brazza.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Mukhal. Is Ms. Mukhal with us? Okay, so with that, we're a six-member board right now, and I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will, we will begin with the extension scheduled for nine thirty AM. I will read all of the extensions for us, one behind, one after the other. And then we will ask for a motion on those extensions. Uh, these are all asking for a one-year extension, so we'll go from there. We'll begin with case BOA seven eight eight six six two with the address of five eighty-seven Albany Street. Then we have case BOA one two seven nine zero two two with the address of one ninety-eight Bunkie Hill Street. Then we have case BOA nine four seven five two zero one two, one twenty-one Brookside Avenue. Case BOA six six seven one 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 with the address of one fifty-one Liverpool Street. Next, we have case BOA one zero nine seven three one one with the address of Fourteenth Skylo Street. And finally, we have case BOA one one nine two two six three with the address of three thirty-five Chelston Street. And that are the extensions for us this morning.
Any questions from the board? May I have a, may I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant all the extensions for one year.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Is Ms. Mukhal with us? Okay, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to board final obituary case scheduled for nine thirty AM. That is case BOA six six seven one 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 with the address of one fifty-one Liverpool Street. If the applicant or their representative was present with them, please explain.
Anthony is on, give me one second. He's having some issues converting to a panelist. Anthony, if you're on, can you raise your hand? Okay. I think he may have dropped off. Someone's hand is going up and down.
Jessica, that's him who's on as A L L.
Is A L L? Okay, oh, okay. One second. Okay, Anthony, go ahead. I sent a request to unmute you.
Oh, yes, good morning. Uh, yes, A L L, I'm sorry, that's my initials, Anthony L. Luchacy, as opposed to the word all. Uh, forgive me for that. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, uh, again, I'm Anthony Luchacy with the law firm of Propedus and Bluestein, six hundred Atlantic Avenue in Boston. I need to request a deferral of this. Uh, our project is subject to a small project review under Article eighty, and the planning department wants us to, uh, go through the, uh, project change review process at the planning department because one of the changes involves, uh, a reduction in the, uh, off-street parking. Uh, so, uh, I'd spoken to counsel at, uh, ISD, and I believe she's on the, on this call, and, uh, we had discussed a deferral.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Carol, Carolyn, is, is he referring to you? Did he speak to you?
Yes, he did.
Okay, uh, any questions from the board? What timeline do you need as far as a deferral?
Well, I'm told that there is an, uh, expedited change review process for this type of modification, uh, but the suggestion was forty-five to sixty days.
Okay, do we have a date for him?
Counsel, would you prefer November or December?
Um. I think, uh, I think December, just to be safe.
Sure, would you like December third or December ten?
Let's go with December third.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion of a deferral to December third.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Now, um, moving on to the hearing scheduled for nine thirty AM, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Uh, yes, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, and Hanley, uh, looking for a deferral on forty-six High Street. Mr. Secretary, it's the last one on page three, I believe, of the, of the, um, agenda, forty-six High Street.
So that would be for, so that would be for case BOA one five nine nine three two six with the address of forty-six High Street.
Yes, sir. Yeah. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Secretary, go ahead, I apologize.
Would you go ahead and explain, would you?
Yes, sir. Sorry for that. Uh, yeah, Madam Sec, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, looking for a deferral. Um, we've gotten a lot of, uh, community and planning input, uh, as to the project uh, that we are hoping for some more time to review and, uh, address before we come before the board. So we're looking for a deferral on this project, please.
Thank you. Um, what timeframe do you need?
A few months.
Caroline?
Um, we could do September twenty-fourth, October eighth, or October twenty-ninth.
Um. I think let's do October eighth, please.
With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to October the eighth.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Do you then?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, Attorney Jeff Drago at Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. Uh, is it still confirmed there is a six-member board?
Uh, at this time, yes.
Okay, uh, we would like to, uh, seek a deferral for thirty-six and thirty-six A Layden Street, Ward one.
Okay.
So the request, so the request is for case BOA one six one six three eight zero with the address of thirty-six Layden Street along with case BOA one six one six three eight four with the address of thirty-six A Layden Street. Would you please explain?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago again. Um, we were planning on moving forward, but we would like, uh, a time when there is a full board. Uh, so we would seek a def, a deferral at a time at the board's discretion.
Okay, uh, any of the dates, uh, that were mentioned workable for you, Mr. Drago?
The earliest one would be fine since we're, we're completed community process.
Mr. Carolyn?
Um, so does Tuesday, October eighth work?
Sure.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion of deferral for October eighth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you then.
So again, while I ask if there are any more requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
And a reminder that we are currently a six-member board.
With that, then we shall move on to case BOA one six one five nine three two with the address from fourteen forty Mount Vernon Street. If the applicant or their representative is present, please explain to the board.
You can unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Zach McCotts. I live at sixty-seven Pearl Street in Charleston. Project manager for this project at forty Mount Vernon Street, also in Charleston. I can walk you through the plans here that you want to scroll up a little bit to the first page.
Sir, I don't know if you can speak, uh, more directly into your mic, you're slight, you're a little bit muffled.
Okay, see, can you hear better now?
Uh, keep going, we'll, we'll see.
Can you hear it better now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, there. Um, okay, so, yeah, basically, we're seeking relief, um, for two articles here, um, with the zoning code. One is for area ratio being excessive, and the second is a roof structure restriction. Uh, the excessive floor area ratio is related to the additional living space that we are hoping to add in the lower level of unit one. Uh, we're looking to add a, a third bedroom down there, a, another bathroom and an office if there's still available. Uh, that's really what brings us over the bar, so, um, the first level of this unit will have a, another master bed in the back and a third bedroom in front of the house, uh, with two additional bathrooms for each of those bedrooms. Uh, if you scroll down to the following page, um, we have unit two and three shown here, with unit two having, uh, three bedrooms as well. One in the front, one in the back, and another one next to the one in the back. Uh, kitchen with some, some outdoor space, a deck off the back. Uh, unit three, um, is going to have this roof deck that's hopefully going to be added to it. It's going to be accessed via bubble hatch within the unit, so only unit three will have access to this roof deck. Uh, they do have another deck off the side, uh, which is consistent with the levels below, but um, as I said, this will be the only unit that will have, uh, roof access to the deck. Um, this unit will also be a three-bed, uh, two-bath with laundry in the unit.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted Anna Butter's meeting on June twelfth, at which no concerns are raised. Were raised, our office is unaware of other concerns at this time, and we defer to the judgment of the board with that background. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the roof deck sides be inset five feet from the roof.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Next case has been deferred, so we'll move on to case BOA one five nine six nine one five with the address of one seventy-five F Street. If the applicant or their representative is present, please explain to the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant. Also on the hearing are the project proponents, Evan Lank and David Lank of Sharp Venture Group, and the architect for the project, Pedro Lucas from Zephyr Architects. Um, before you on the screen are the plans as revised, um, following the community review process, and I understand that the revised plans were um, posted, and these are the plans that are before you. Um, the property consists of four parcels of land running from West Third Street on the right-hand side of that image down the hill on F Street to Bolton Street on the left-hand side of the image. And as you can see, and the architect will speak to a little bit more, the design features three separate masses, yet uh, constitutes one building, which consists of nine residential units with six parking spaces on the lower level accessed on the Bolton Street side of the property. Currently, there's just one small, single building in the middle of the parcel, and the balance of the lots are presently vacant, so this will take largely underutilized vacant parcels and turn them into new units of residential housing. Uh, the unit mix is varied. There are two three-bedroom units on the top floors, four two-bedroom units, two one-bedroom units, and one smaller studio unit. Um, the revisions since the planning department recommendation of approval memo, um, again, as a result of the process, the, there was a half top floor on the middle portion of the building, and that has been removed, which resulted in removal of the height violation in the original refusal letter, and the revised refusal letter reflects the height violation has been eliminated. That also resulted in a reduction of the proposed FAR from two point nine six to two point six seven, and also the two private roof decks for the upper floor units were repositioned and pulled away from the edge of the building. Um, the four parcels consist of two middle lots along F Street and two corner lots, one on West Third and one on Bolton Street. Again, the existing building will be demolished, and the entirety of the project represents new construction. Um, as you can see, the design is contemporary with materiality that reflects the context of the surrounding neighborhood, mainly wood and brick. And again, I'll have Pedro speak, uh, briefly to that. Um, as noted in the planning department memo, the scale massing and multifamily residential use is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Excuse me. Um, the property is point one miles from the bus network along West Broadway and a short walk to the Broadway Redline Station, which meets the goals of increasing density, near transit, and commercial services outlined in Go Boston and Imagine Boston, both planning studies commissioned, um, in two thousand seventeen. Uh, the planning department memo does note that usable open space requirement is being, um, part of the requirement is being met with the creation of the two private roof decks and balconies, um, and actually recommends that there be an attempt to increase uh, the number of balconies to create additional open space. Well, next slide, please, showing the site plan to give you some context. Next slide. And the next one. That's existed, yeah. Okay, this one enlarged. So you can see on the upper portion of the site plan is Bolton Street, which is one of those small half-streets in South Boston. F Street runs down the hill in a one-way direction, and Bolton Street runs one way from right to left. Um, the building is somewhat L-shaped. You can see with the combination of the parcels along Bolton and F, and then the parcel to the right of the L portion of the building is owned by another, um, another entity not related to this development, but that remains open space. There is a note in the planning department memo about headhouse access to the roof decks, and of course, as this board knows, uh, the building code requires headhouse access, so we designed it as such to not draw the building code violation, but are amenable to if this board deems that appropriate as part of the BPDA design review, um, to consider removal of the headhouses and introduction of hatches, which will require a separate um, subsequent trip to this board for the building code issue, uh, but we are amenable to that. Um, with that, I would just like to have Pedro Lucas speak briefly to the design, um, iteration and the contextual concepts that the architects had in mind for the development of this new building on vacant parcels of land. Pedro?
Thank you, Mark. Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, my name is Pedro Lucas, Zephyr Architects. Um, so, like, uh, Mark mentioned, and I'll try to summarize here, we are proposing a multifamily a building of nine units in total with a mix of, uh, one, two, and three bedrooms totaling, uh, just about ten thousand square feet. Uh, to speak to our design decisions, uh, we were thoughtful in its contextuality. Uh, our height at three stories matches the neighboring context, um, and our use of brick also references the neighborhood, uh, in F Street in particular. Um, the subdivision of the facade, uh, reflects the rhythm of the neighborhood. Uh, the width of the brick portion mimics the typical building width seen nearby. And the brick connects with a wood cladding, uh, on both sides to add warmth to the facade that will improve the pedestrian experience. Um, in addition, we propose to add greenery along that front facade uh, where our foundation is exposed, um, in order to improve the pedestrian experience for our neighbors. Um, we're also proposing an elevator, like Mark mentioned, which provides us with the opportunity to create adaptable units. Um, and lastly, um, as advocates for indoor, indoor/outdoor living, uh, we've worked hard to provide, uh, outdoor space for our units. So, in summary, um, we prioritized, you know, proposing a contextual, size-appropriate uh, and thoughtful design that will be a positive addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted Anna Butter's meeting on May ninth, at which some concerns were expressed about the decks on the property, although the design was generally supported by a Butters. The Saint Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association, the active civic group in this area, declined to take a position on the proposal, although the proponents were in communication with them. Uh, with that background, our office defers to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Jessica, it looks like Melissa Lowe from Councilor Flynn's office wants to be elevated.
I see her. Uh, one second. Give me one second, so, okay, Melissa, uh, one second.
Alright.
Is there anyone else?
Madam Chair, please let me know if it's um, so much time for me to speak on behalf of Councilor Flynn's office.
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, um, members of the board. Uh, my name is Melissa Lowe from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in the opposition based on feedback from neighbors and the Butters, as well as the Saint Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association. During the community process, neighbors consistently express concern on the height and density, as well as quality of life concerns emanating from the roof deck due to already existing issues in the neighborhood. With the Butters reporting that they often have to call Boston Police on the party line on other nearby roof decks at all hours. At this time, as part of the top floor and roof decks remain, Councilor Flynn would like to oppose due to that feedback from neighbors and the Saint Vincent's Lower and Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Um, I do see an additional raised hand here in one second. Um, Sachin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, my name is Sachin Ba. I live, um, a J, uh, next to this property at two fifty-nine uh, Bolton Street, and I did submit, uh, testimony earlier on behalf of twenty neighbors who are opposed, um, to the project as, as it is proposed today um, due to the height, um, and the density of the project, um. It would be significantly taller than some of the, uh, single-family homes that are right next to the property.
Okay, and then Thank you. Player two, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yes, sorry, my name's different. I'm Frances Carter. I'm, I'm, um, the adjacent neighbor on Bolton Street to this lot, and, um, I just want to echo Sachin's, uh, comments, mainly concerned with the, um, size difference in height as compared to our houses, looking at about seventy percent taller than our buildings on Bolton Street in addition to the, um, the density of this building and the additional neighborhoods and noise complaints, as noted.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Mr. LaCasse, would you like to briefly, uh, respond to those concerns?
Yes, Madam Chair, so I note that on height, um, the revised plans reflect removal of the half-top floor, and the proposed structure is forty feet, which is zoning compliant for this M F R sub-district. The, the maximum is forty, and the proposed height is forty. As for density, um, we believe that the separation of the building into three masses across the four lots directly is contextual with the entirety of the row of buildings on F Street coming down the hill on both sides of F Street. Three-story multifamily residential buildings containing three or more units. Um, so we think that the height is, well, we don't think, the height is zoning compliant, and that the, um, density is entirely consistent with the context of the neighborhood. We also submitted a package of our own support letters, and there are at least a dozen letters um, addressing the very issues that have been raised by the opposition. Um, expressing full support for the project, introduction of new houses. And the contemporary design of the project.
I also wanted to add um, in response to the roof decks, I know Councilor Flynn's office uh, had some opposition to roof decks, and we did speak to some of the butters on the roof decks. Uh, we did reposition the roof decks as far away from. The concern it affected a butter as possible. We reduced the size of the roof decks by. Uh, forty-five uh, square feet since conversations with the butters, and then we've offered uh. You know, design input from them from a a permanent screening perspective, from an acoustical and visual perspective, so. Our goal is to work with the community to make everything as palatable as it can be despite the concerns.
And Madam Chair, one of the support letters from Mr. Katzman on West Third Street notes the uh. Significant number of roof decks in this neighborhood along West Third Street, along West Second Street, West First Street, Bolton, Athens. They're pretty much roof decks. If you do Google aerial view on pretty much every building in the in the neighborhood, and Mr. Katzman noted that those were. Never a problem and did not represent an issue in the neighborhood whatsoever. With that, we'll conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes. Um, Boston Planning Department's design review, paying special attention to site planning specifically on the rear setback. On Bolton Street. Um, and also to the review, review the headhouse to make sure it's not visible from the street. And lastly, on the elevations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Her vote's yes, the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A. One, six, zero, zero, four, three, seven. With the address of one thirty-nine to one forty-one Minut Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of one sixty-eight H Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, joining me today are the owners, Michael and Maggie Mancuso, as well as the project architect, Michael Schelling. This is a proposal to update an existing two-story, two-family dwelling. By way of interior renovation, along with a rare and vertical addition, creating much more needed. Additional living space for a growing family in this neighborhood. The third story addition will expand the unit two living space. The rare addition will create more space at the first floor. The proposal will also provide new rear decks on first and second level, as well as widening the first and second floor front decks. The proposal is located within a two F five thousand sub-district. Unit one is a three-bedroom, will be continue to be located on the first floor. Unit two will be located on the second floor, and the newly proposed third floor will be a four-bedroom. There are four zoning violations. We have a floor area ratio violation. The current floor area ratio violation is. Pre-existing non-conforming at a point five two. And the new proposal calls for a point nine three. What is allowed by code is a point five. We have a front yard and a side yard that is insufficient. Again, those violations are pre-existing non-conforming. No changes being made to the side yard setback at six foot eight inches on the left-hand side. The changes to the front are due to the widening of the front decks. Uh, the front yard setback is at nine feet four inches. We also have a height violation. The building is compliant with feet, but has been cited for stories at as two and a half stories is what is compliant, and the proposal calls for three. Uh, at this point, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, and I'm with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. The community process was held for one thirty-nine to one forty-one Minut Street. Uh, and a butters meeting was held on May twenty-eighth of this year and was lightly attended by three constituents. Uh, all who voiced their support, uh, and Mr. Moylan said that he was fully supportive of a family staying in Boston. Um, the proposal then went before the Cedar Grove Civic Association on June eighteenth of this year. And is supportive of the proposal as well, and requests that the proponents be granted necessary relief to move forward with the project. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you very much, everyone.
Even.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Ramus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to on record in support.
Not, right, because the document they sent me says showed forty-seven and a half.
You please mute Jessica. Okay, sorry, Mr. Remus, please proceed.
Oh yeah, so uh, Liam Ramus, Council Fitzgerald's office, our office would like to on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Yep, Aaron, I see your hand is. You're unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Hello and good morning. Uh, my name is Kevin O'Sullivan. I'm from Counselor Aaron Murphy's office. Uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, Council Murphy would like to go on record in support of this project. Uh, standing with the community and the proponents. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thanks. And then I'm also going to make your panelist so that you can unmute yourself. I may have no additional raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Well?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Co- Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have case B O A. One, five, eight, seven, seven, two, zero. With the address of fifty-two R River Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning. Good day, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Juan Soto, and I reside at fifty-two River Street. I own apartment number three. Fifty-two R is a seven-unit condominium. Uh, my unit is located east side of the building facing uh, River Street and a gas station right next to me. Uh, with an outdoor um, auto repair center in it. All other porches in the building face north towards the Nippon's River. I am here today because I am looking to convert the roof section next to my unit into a simple um, roof deck. This area is only accessible from my unit. Um, the plan to convert it into a deck has been fully vetted and approved by all other units in the building and the HOA. Um, I would like to reference the second page on my presentation, uh, the one above this one. Yep, um. So, so um, so as you can see, the area in question here is the one that shows the railing. Um, on the right side, the two levels of windows that you see on the left side, that is my unit. So as you can see, it is only accessible from my unit. Um. On the next page, you can see uh, the space a bit more in context. Um. Though, so the green area is the proposed roof deck. Um, as you can see, the auto repair and gas stations are very, very close to to mu- to me. Um, the plan for the space was developed by an architectural firm that reviewed the plans for the building and confirmed the structure integrity of the area. Um, the proposed plan is very, very simple. Um, as you were able to see on the image above. Uh, it only consists on a decking to protect the roof and railing for safety. It is very similar, if not identical, to the other uh, two roof decks atop my building, as well as the um, the ones um, on the abutted buildings. In addition to providing me with an outdoor seating area, it will hopefully mitigate the noises on the view from the gas station and the auto repair center that have. Um, outdoor lifts. Um, it will provide shade and cover the black tarp that currently sits on top of the area that gets extremely hot. Reducing hopefully the need to use A C or smudge A C during the spring and summer. And to close up, because we have very limited green area around the building, this space will provide for uh, plant to help pollinators and insects. In the area. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, um, O N S facilitated uh, community meeting on May twentieth. Uh, no opposition was voiced in the meeting, and one attendee did vocalize their support. Uh, the applicant then went on to present to the River Street Civic Association. Who supported the proposal and voted to uh, approve. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. There should be a copy of that River Street letter the board has access to. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A. One, five, eight, six, five, eight, seven. With the address of ten eighty-six Hyde Park Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, Mrs. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. Have a business address of fifty-one Dobson Road, Braintree, Mass. Uh, with me today are the owners of the property, uh, Ms. Peddery Brad James and Mr. Kurt Copeland. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to rebuild and reconstruct the rear addition. Uh, to this two-family, to the two-family house. Um, the rear addition on the house was damaged, heavily damaged by water. Due to a uh, pipe burst in the property, so we are seeking to replace what was there. Um, minus the damage. Madam Chair, the zoning sub-district here is a two F. Five thousand. Our lot size is nine thousand five hundred square feet. And we have one violation, which is a side yard insufficient. The requirement in this zoning sub-district is ten feet. We have eight point five or eight and a half feet. And that is a pre-existing non-conforming um, violation that is on the right side of the property. We'll stop there and entertain any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, um, O N S hosted in a butters meeting on May ninth, uh, that was lightly attended. Uh, there were no concerns um, expressed uh, in that meeting. Uh, the applicant went on to meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. Which was supportive of this uh, proposal. Of that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve this project.
Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be there.
Next, we have case B O A. One, six, zero, zero, one, eight, six. With the address of sixty-seven Building Street. The applicant and or their representative is present. Would they please explain the case?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. We are proposing to add a second floor along with attic space for storage to our current home for our growing family. Uh, we also are adding a twelve-by-sixteen two-story addition to the back of a house. Um, in summary, we'd be adding two bedrooms to the second floor. And two bathrooms, and then the storage for the attic, um, the attic space. Our violations for the uh, for the side yard. Or the house to our left, uh, which there was actually already an existing deck when we moved in there. Um, we're just proposing to. Uh, enclose it and put a second story for more space upstairs. And the other violation was the front where we would like to add a front porch. Uh, we thought it would make the house look better for aesthetics, and. We could watch our kids play out front, so that was our reasoning.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on May twenty-ninth, at which no concerns were raised. The proponents additionally appeared at the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council Zoning Subcommittee. They voted to support this proposal. With that background, our office defers to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I, and um, I'm sure I have no raised hands at the. May I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A. One, six, one, seven, two, two, six. With the address of fifty-three to fifty-five Dustin Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Uh, yes, Mr. Secretary, uh, Kyle Smith of Statera Law, business address of uh, three, five, nine Newbury Street in Boston's Beck Bay. Uh, happy to jump in if uh, the board doesn't have any preliminary questions.
Please proceed.
Okay, um, so we have a relatively decent-sized lot of about fifty-two seventy-one square feet. Uh, there's a pre-existing structure, which is a pre-existing two-family. With approximately a footprint of about twelve hundred square feet. There's an existing drive, as you can see, with uh, a garage that uh, services two vehicles. Uh, the proposal, uh, having personally been on-site, I can tell you that this property that's been owned by the family for. The better part of, you know, many generations, about a hundred years, is in the need of a a full gut rehab. Uh, the plan in this proposal is to convert. Uh, existing living space on the third floor by adding dormers left and right, running linearly down. Uh, the property to expand the livable square footage in the attic space, the third floor. Uh, and also to take what is existing storage area, uh, mechanicals in the basement. And to convert a part of it to approximately six hundred and eighty-four square feet of livable square footage in the. Uh, basement level, which would then be tied into the uh, first floor unit. Therefore rendering the building uh, converted to two to a three-family. Uh, part of the process will be updating uh, all of the required safety systems, including the installation of sprinklers. Converting from a two to a three. Um, so just running briefly through for you the uh, refusal letter. Um, we are adding a space to accommodate the third proposed separate unit. Um, it does bring it into close proximity with the uh, right lot lines. We have um, several maneuverability parking-related issues, even though we do have. Existing driveway and off-street uh, garage and parking. Uh, the conversion to a three-family cited violation. Uh, we have a point six allowable F A R. The proposed F A R after completion would be sub point seven, a point six nine. Uh, so a modest increase, again, adding a slight amount of livable square footage in the existing third floor. Uh, and then also adding six hundred and eighty-four square feet of square footage to the livable square footage to the basement. Um, we have allowed two and a half stories per code. Uh, by increasing the F A R, the livable area of the third floor, we're effectively having a three-story rebuilding, uh, hence another cited violation. Uh, and then by building vertically uh, through the dormers, we are then triggering exacerbation of a pre-existing non-conformity for the front and side uh, setbacks. Um, the only real, I'll just run through for you the uh, units. Proposed first unit would now be a basement and combined first floor. Uh, for a net three-bed, three-bath. Uh, of approximately uh, seventeen hundred and change in square feet. Uh, the second floor mirrors the first floor layout. About one thousand fifty-nine square feet. It is a three-bed, a two-bath. And the third floor, the only real substance substantial difference is that the. Um, livable area of the rear extension does not carry forward to the third floor. Or carry upward. Uh, the proposal is to add a roof deck to that existing structure from exterior space for the third unit. Uh, and the third unit is proposed to be eight hundred and fifty-six square feet and a two-bed, two-bath. Um, we've conducted B I, B A I A meetings as um, an available test to act for us. We had. I think good uh, reception in those meetings. We held the butters meetings with um, lighter turnout, but no negative feedback. Um, so I think hopefully this, you know, property is in the need of some T L C. I do have representatives of the family on the call. Um, we do have sons who are now co-owners and looking to undertake this project themselves, as opposed to. Offloading it to a developer who would probably do something very similar. So we're trying to keep this inside of the family. Uh, for future, future use and uh, rental purposes for the family. And with that, I'll happily turn it over to the board for questions.
Thank you, are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on June eleventh at which no concerns were raised. Proponents additionally appeared at the regularly scheduled June meeting of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, the active civic group in this area. And that group is in support of this proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Annabella?
Thank you, and I.
Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. The proponent did present to the BIA and the BIA voted to support this project, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have no additional raised hands at the public table.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with a proviso. That.
Approval?
A motion approval with a proviso that the project eliminates that additional parking space.
Is there a second?
Um. Sorry, this is Caroline, I just would wonder if that could be reconsidered because it could trigger other zoning violations.
The zoning violation would be the parking requirement. Correct? I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the violations and they're cited for already off-street parking design. Off-street parking requirements, they, they're already cited for off-street parking requirements.
Okay, so that would not, okay.
So that wouldn't, can, can I ask council what's required, what's required for three-unit in terms of parking?
Yeah, so effectively doing so would eliminate our, our maneuverability and location issues, but then trigger a number issue. So it would, it would trade, it would trade two zoning violations for another.
Right, so then I think the option that we would have would be to have a motion of, of denial without prejudice and have you come before us. To, to potentially, right? Or to, to move forward with the proviso and have you submit for addition, for that additional violation with ISD.
Either way, it sounds like you'll be back.
Got it, is that a lynchpin requirement or proviso?
Correct, so Caroline, can you provide us a little bit, because we've run into this issue before. So if I was to, if it was to trigger another violation, or if Jeff Hampton's here. What would be the, what would be the process for the applicant?
So they would have to return again to the ZBA? For the relief or reducing the parking space?
Correct, but at least it provides them with an approval versus with the, with the denial, it doesn't guarantee that it would be approved. So I think, so I think what I would like to move forward is with the original motion. A motion of, of approval with a proviso that eliminates that one additional parking space.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
May I ask, is Mr. Hampton on?
Yeah, Kyle, if you wouldn't mind giving me a call offline after this, I'd be happy to talk with you about this.
Yep, and no objection, my concern too is if the community through that process objects to its removal, we could then raise concern we otherwise have had none, but I certainly will email you afterwards.
Yeah, why don't you shoot me an email, we can, we can talk.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA. One, six, zero. Eight, five, eight, six. With the address of three fifty-three Cambridge Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand for this proposal? Greg Donovan?
Okay, I say we keep moving and circle back.
With that, we'll move on to case BOA. One, five, four. Six, eight, six, eight. Which is one of three companion cases. The address for the first is three A Glenley Terrace. Along with that, we have case BOA. One, six, one. Three, one, six, two. With the address of one to three Glenley Terrace. And along with those two, we have case BOA. One, six, one. Three, one, six, six. With the address of five Glenley Terrace. Yeah, applicant and or their representative is present, they explain to the board for us?
Hi, Tim, are you on? Oh, there you go. Yes, good morning, my name is Timothy Burke, I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of one forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston. And also on the meeting is George Marancy, who is the attorney for the project. And I, George, did you want to make any introductory remarks?
Yes, Tim, thank you, I'm sorry, I, my headset had not been connected when I, when I began my presentation. For the record, my name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Patrick O'Sullivan, who owns three, three A and five Glenley Terrace. The project architect, Tim Burke, just spoke and will return to Tim after I talk about the project and the zoning a bit. The project is three connected parcels, as Mr. Stenbridge mentioned, the planning department's recommendation does an excellent job of providing a simple explanation of what is being proposed under these three related applications, namely the demolition of the existing garage at three Glenley Terrace. Construction of a new two-family dwelling building at three A Glenley Terrace, which is currently vacant. And the addition of a shared driveway serving the three properties, which are, as I mentioned, in common ownership. The result would be a new two, would be two new dwelling units. And six parking spaces with three of those parking spaces serving three Glenley Terrace, one serving three A Glenley. And two dedicated to five Glenley Terrace. With respect to the zoning, the properties are located within a two F five thousand two-family residential sub-district in the Alston-Brighton neighborhood article. Significantly, and also as recited in the planning recommendation. The site is further within the Alston-Brighton Needs Assessment Study area. Which expresses concerns about both the affordability and the quality of affordable, I'm sorry, of available housing options within the area. This proposal would respond positively to that by adding a new two-family building with a two-bedroom unit and a three-bedroom unit. We likewise agree with the planning department that relief for the cited setback violations is appropriate. In light of the size and shape of this corner lot site. Configuration of the parking layout. Prevailing setbacks in the neighborhood, as well as in the context of adding much-needed new housing units to the area. Finally, we concur with the planning recommendation that if approved, we would work with the planning department to eliminate or minimize any impact on existing site trees while ensuring adequate vehicular maneuverability. I would like to turn it over to Tim Burke to briefly walk the board through the project plans, and then we'll take any and all questions from board members, Tim?
Miss, sorry, Tim or George, just a quick question since we're on this slide, how many parking spaces are there now and where are they?
There's currently an existing garage at, as I say, three Glenley Terrace. The project site is on the left-hand side, which shows who proposed two-family residence, that's currently a vacant lot. The parking at number three Glenley is essentially an existing condition in that tandem formation. I believe that's all, correct him?
That is, and we are adding parking behind number five as well. There's nothing there now, yep.
Thanks, does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, if you want to go through the plans, that would be great.
Yes, thank you very much, George. During the community process, we did hear a lot from the neighbors about the importance of parking, and that's where we came up with this scheme that you're seeing on the screen now. It provides a lot of versatility to how the parking can work when visitors are over for just visiting for the evening or something, they can park in the driveway and then pull out without disturbing the regular parkers. The, the site is an unusual shaped site and a bit of a challenge, but in our meetings with the neighbors, they did seem to like the idea of another two-family, they liked the idea of smaller scale housing being built rather than large giant projects. And this is very similar to one that I did with the same owner over on Atkins Street that was very successful. In terms of filling in a space between two buildings that he already owned. The next drawing does show the plans of the building. So it's side by side, basically, two-family. The, both units run about eleven hundred and forty square feet. And the, one has two bedrooms and one has three bedrooms, so it would be suitable for a family, which was another thing we heard from the neighborhood. And on the, the next drawing shows the elevations of the project, and it's designed to be using traditional forms of the neighborhood, clabbered siding, double-hung windows and gable roofs, so we, we feel it's going to be a nice addition to the neighborhood, our hope is that it just fits right in and seems like it's always been there. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, are there questions from the board?
There, there's no questions, but Bob D'Amico has commented on the chat, and it would be good to get his opinion on this project. But Bob, to answer your question, we have, we did receive your comments, they're very helpful from the Boston Transportation Department. And it weighed, weighed in a lot on the last project, so just wanted to comment on that.
So, Mr. Marancy or Mr. Burke, so the, the feedback was to remove two spaces in the front yard. For three A Glenley. If you'd like to respond to that.
Can we go back to the site plan?
Yeah, we don't have any spaces in the front yard of three A Glenley. We were adding two behind number five Glenley, which is at the top of the drawing. And we didn't create one spot on the side there, on the, sort of the back side of three A.
So as Tim is relating, the only parking that's being introduced is the two spaces to the rear of five Glenley, in that side yard or backyard or side yard space, it's an unusually shaped lot. The single car parking at three A Glenley. The condition, the parking condition at three Glenley is an existing condition, you know, that, that driveway has been there, cars pull in and they park in, in formation, but you know, if, if board members were to look at a Google Earth shot, you would see that that is, that is an existing condition, so it's, it's the, the, the new parking spaces are a three A, which is not in the front yard, and five, which is clearly in the rear yard.
Thank you.
I mean, the, the other, the other issue that I have is, or concern would be if there's families, you know, what makes it safe for kids, it, it looks like, you know, for any of those four structures. Doesn't seem very safe for children to roam around in, in, around their house.
I think that perimeter fences bordering the lots, in other words, creating a border fence between driveway area and the lots could be, could be helpful. You, you can see in the, in the green space areas indicated on the lots. You know, the, the driveway certainly runs past, you know, to the south, plan south of number five and, and plan north of number three. And then that parking space for number three A is very close to the, to the, to the driveway exit or entrance anyway. But we, you know, we could certainly look at that with, with the planning department if this were to be approved.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Bob's hand is up.
I understand that, and I'll go to that during public comment, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted in a Butters meeting for this project on January eleventh. At that Butters meeting, Butters expressed concerns with parking, size, density, shadow, noise, construction setbacks, loss of green space and attractiveness to families. Some other attendees at that meeting were supportive and expressed that they felt the project was necessary to support the developer and that parking was reasonable. We are aware that this project got the support of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We've not received any letters of support or opposition at this time, we'd like to go on record and defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Bob, I see your hand is raised. You're looking to give testimony, Bob?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTV. It's a beautiful project, the only thing, unless I'm missing something, I don't see the curb cuts shown on the plan, and I know there's one already in place, but I'd like to see them reflected on the drawing for, you know, legal purposes, if you will. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Annabella?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record and support. We think this is a great use of the vacant lot to add much-needed housing. And we do commend the developer for addressing the parking issues that the neighbors had a lot of concerns about. So we'd like to go on record and support, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, members of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record and support. We think this is a great use of the vacant lot to add much-needed housing. And we commend the developer for addressing the parking issues that the neighbors had a lot of concerns about. So we'd like to go on record and support, thank you.
Can you, can you clarify, when you say address the parking issues, do you mean, do you mean enough parking, or do you mean reducing parking? I don't, is that Annabella, or?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure why that's replaying. But what was brought up during meetings were that
Sure, I'm trying to mute that person, yeah.
Thank you, please do.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, Annabella? If you're still there.
Yes, I had concern that there wouldn't be enough parking if another unit, two units were built. And so they addressed having parking off-street so that the neighbors' concerns of losing on-street parking for themselves would be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Richard?
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to go in support of this. I, I know the person who's the developer, and he's got a good reputation, all of his other properties fit in well with the community, and he maintains his property very well. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother who lives at twenty Gray Cliff Road. Who grew up in that house, and my brother who also lives at six seventy-nine Washington Street. With third-generation Brighton residents in a neighborhood with only twenty percent owner occupancy. We certainly appreciate the kind of work that Mr. O'Sullivan does, not only as a businessman, but as a property owner. His properties are all well-maintained, and they all fit in with the community. So I'm in full support of it, and I ask the community and the ZBA to also support this, please, thank you.
Thanks, I got a few more raised hands, Kim?
I, yeah, yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. Yes, my, my husband and I own eighty Brayton Road. My name is Kim Rin, and I did submit written testimony as well for this project and support for today's hearing. But we have known Patrick O'Sullivan for twenty years. He raised his family in Brighton, is invested in the community. All of his properties, developments and business endeavors have always bettered the community. I've seen plans for this project and I've attended all the meetings to date. And I am in full support of the project. I'm also a long resident of Brighton, was raised and lived there for thirty years. I feel this development will provide much-needed quality housing in the city. Patrick is always in Brighton, and I have no doubt this property will be properly maintained and supervised.
Thank you.
Kim Claudette?
Hi, I'm Claudette Gardell, I'm in a butter. I've lived in my house for sixty-eight years, longtime person, and I'm not the only one like that in my neighborhood, there's many of us who are longtime family people, and we're for the and we're, for the most part, pretty friendly. I was glad this project was rejected because of all of its violations of codes. This is a nice neighborhood with some gardens. We have birds, we raise kids, and the people in support of the developer and the owner. Yeah, he's probably a really nice guy. He doesn't live here. He lives in a very uh remote place that has lots of trees, and he likes to sort of build here, okay? Uh and and what seems like to me a maniacal pursuit to overcome the parking violations. He's now modified his plans to pave over an area of grass, which is adjacent to me, and so um this area, this offshoot of this long tandem parking, uh I think will be congested, it will be unsafe, like uh someone's commented. It will provide confusion, it's disruptive, it's chaotic. How will they shovel the snow? Where will they put the snow? Uh it's it, you know, the pictures make it look really nice. What we have there now is this beautiful old tree. Trees are good. They like clean the air, they provide shade, and you know, uh and shade is very important now. The grass that will be paved over, this is a place where water can absorb into the ground. This is a this, to me, is a nightmare, okay? I know there's a need for housing. I understand that, okay?
Understand.
Finish up, okay? I understand, and uh and there are, there are places being built all over, okay? But we, we need, we need our air, we need our grass, and this parking thing is just crazy nuts. Please, please believe the code violations. Please protect the people who have lived here. They're there for a reason, okay? And I was really happy that it was rejected before. This is really bad.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two additional raised hands. Can I, should I take those, or?
Yep, please proceed and please the, get the, add new information.
Okay, yeah, Peter?
Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh yes, my name is Peter Bull. I am at two Academy Hill Road, and I just want to express support for the proposal. I do think that the Brighton neighborhood does need more uh housing for families, and uh based upon the plans, I can see that there's going to be no impact on the parking, as most of it will be off-street parking. Um so I'm fully supportive of the uh, the developer and the uh development.
Thank you. Jessica, you said you had another raised hand? Jessica, is there another raised hand?
Sorry, it looks like they lowered their hand. Let me just
Okay.
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Would the applicant like to adjust uh some of those concerns? Any additional comments before we proceed?
Uh Madam Chair, this is George Marancy. I think the plans and the projects stand for themselves. Uh I understand that uh the, one of the previous speakers does have concerns uh about uh the parking, but as was mentioned uh during community process, this was the major issue that came up that my client sought to address. And I think the uh parking situation is actually quite manageable. It it is only introducing three additional spaces, and there is that shared driveway that is uh virtually a present condition uh because of the uh the common ownership of the three parcels. So uh we think it's a good project and that it will serve to uh make um good use of what is currently a vacant lot, with again, trying to preserve uh as many street trees, I'm sorry, as many site trees as possible and adding uh two units on an otherwise undeveloped lot.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have the Cambridge Street?
Can you raise your hand if you're on for the Cambridge Street proposal? Obviously two raised hands. Harry or Willie, is that you? Are you on for the Cambridge Street proposal?
Three fifty-three Cambridge Street.
Send requests to unmute them, but they haven't answered.
Madam Chair, uh this is George Marancy. Could I be heard for a moment, please, on this matter?
On three fifty-three Cambridge Street?
Yes, uh and I'll, I'll explain, and the, and the board can uh of course do what it, what it wishes. Uh my name's George Marancy. For the record, uh I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I recognize the name uh Greg, Greg Donovan. Uh he is a client of mine. I have nothing to do with uh three fifty-three Cambridge Street, but I did um text him uh when this matter was first called, uh and I have not heard from him. I guess all I'm requesting is, as a courtesy, since he is a client of mine, even though I'm not related to the project, I know sometimes the board will deny without prejudice a matter where the applicant or petitioner doesn't appear. I guess what I'm requesting is uh if nobody in fact appears uh since we're at the end of uh of the nine-thirty block of hearings, rather than deny without prejudice if this matter could be deferred, and I will advise Mr. Donovan of that.
Uh I think we're open to either option, so maybe Mr. Stenbridge can read it into the record. Either way, we need to make a motion, so.
So this is in regards to, excuse me, case BOA one-six-zero-eight-five-eight-six with the address of three fifty-three Cambridge Street. Um Mr. Marancy, you were saying?
Well, he's just seeking a deferral, uh so.
Yes, uh i- if this could be deferred, I'm not involved in the case, but I will, I will let the applicant know of the deferral date if that is the will of the board.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Madam Chair, would you like me to give you a date for the motion?
Sure, let's, let's have a date.
Um Tuesday, October twenty-ninth.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Motion to depart on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth.
May I have this? Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. We wills?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will recess, I believe, until eleven.